Weird.
Like to call this meeting to order. It is a regular city council meeting of Coeur d'Alene. It's 6:00 PM and it's September 2nd. Like to call this meeting to order in a roll call, please.
English?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Gabriel?
Here.
Thank you, Joe. And Mark McWarder here from Nazarene Church to do our invocation. Mark, are you here? Sorry, Mark. We're moving on. The pledge. Kiki, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kiki. Any amendments to the agenda, council? Hearing none. Moving on. So, we're getting a presentation tonight. This is a little out of the norm, but I'm thinking 9/11 is coming next week and we won't be sitting here. And this is a recitation, recitation of President George Bush's address to the nation in remembrance of September 11 terrorist attacks. And from Summit Christian Academy, Colt Kingsbury is gonna do this. And I saw him do this last year and he won some awards doing this. So Colt, assume the position. Thank you for coming out and doing this.
Well, my name is Colt and I'm from Summit Christian Academy. Good evening. Today, our fellow citizens, our way of life, our very freedom came under attack in a series of deliberate and deadly terrorist acts. The victims were in airplanes or in their offices. Secretaries, businessmen and women, military and federal workers, moms and dads, friends and neighbors. Thousands of lives were suddenly ended by evil, despicable acts of terror. The pictures of airplanes flying into buildings, fires burning, and huge structures collapsing have filled us with disbelief, terrible sadness, and a quiet, unyielding anger. These acts of mass murder were intended to frighten our nation into chaos and retreat. But they have failed. Our country is strong. A great people has moved to defend a great nation. Terrorist attacks can shake the foundations of our biggest buildings, but they cannot touch the foundation of America. These acts shattered steel, but they cannot dent the steel of American resolve. America was targeted for attack because we are the brightest beacon for freedom and opportunity in the world. And no one will keep that light from shining. Today, our nation saw evil, the very worst of human nature. And we responded with the best of America, with the daring of our rescue workers, with the caring for strangers and neighbors who came to give blood and help in any way they could. Immediately following the first attack, I implemented our government's emergency response plans. Our military is powerful and it is prepared. Emergency teams are working in New York City and Washington DC to help with local rescue efforts. Functions of our government continue without interruption. Federal agencies in Washington, which had to be evacuated today, are reopening for essential personnel tonight and will be open for business tomorrow. Our financial institutions remain strong, and American economy will be open for business as well. The search is underway for those who are behind these evil acts. I've directed the full resources of our intelligence and law enforcement communities to help find those responsible and to bring them to justice. I will make no distinction between the terrorists who committed these acts and the ones who harbor them. I appreciate so very much the members of Congress who have joined me in strongly condemning these attacks. And on behalf of the American people, I thank the many world leaders who have called to offer their condolences and assistance. America and our friends and allies join with all those who want peace and security in the world. And we stand together to win the war against terrorism. Tonight, I ask for your prayers for all those who grieve, for the children whose worlds have been shattered, for all those whose sense of safety and security has been threatened. And I pray that they'll be comforted by a power greater than any of us, spoken through the ages in Psalm 23. Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for you are with me. Tonight is a night when all Americans, from every walk of life, unite and resolve for justice and peace. America has stood on enemies before, and we will do so this time. None of us will ever forget this day. Yet, we go forth to defend freedom and all that is good and just in our world. Thank you. Good night, and God bless America.
Thank you, Colt. So, we're moving into public comments right now. So if you wanna follow Colt with a public comment? Brought back some tough memories. I've got two people signed up. John Pilchner, welcome, John.
Good evening, mayor and council, city staff. I wanna speak tonight as a neighbor who cares deeply about this city. Like many citizens, I believe we face big challenges, but also have clear opportunities to make progress right away. If I were in a position of leadership, my day-one priorities would be straightforward. First, improve communication by publishing city notices in places beyond just the CDA press so more citizens can see what's happening. Second, support first responders by creating a volunteer chaplain program that gives them and the community support in times of crisis. Third, create a lodging tax that benefits the city, initially self-imposed by hotels, with the goal of securing state legislation that allows Coeur d'Alene to collect revenue directly from overnight stays. These are simple, achievable steps that could be started now. No need to wait for an election. I invite this council to take action on them today. At the same time, campaigns can sometimes feel heavy and divisive, and I believe Coeur d'Alene deserves engagement that's positive, creative, and uniting. That's why tonight, I'm introducing the Better CDA Challenge, a 60-day series of lighthearted, weekly activities that anyone in the community can join. The first challenge is simple. Run a mile, or walk it, or whatever that looks like for you, and post your time. I did mine this morning. First mile I've run in, I don't know, 15 years? And I pushed myself. I got 11 minutes and 5 seconds. I'm really proud of that. I'm inviting my fellow candidates who are here tonight to join me. And when you complete it, you get to choose the next challenge. This isn't just for candidates, it's for everyone. Families, kids, neighbors. Post your mile, or your own version of it, with the hashtag BetterCDAChallenge. Because at the end of the day, we are all neighbors. We all want to protect the institutions that make Coeur d'Alene strong. And we all want to find unity, and we all want to find ways to unite the community we love. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Roger Smith. Roger, you still here? Welcome.
Good evening, council members. I did send most of you a letter with my thoughts, so I hope you received that. But I did wanna be on the record here in public comment with some of my thoughts. On the subject of noise, vehicle noise around Coeur d'Alene. I know that at the last council meeting, there were several public comments made. And so I'm sort of following up on those comments. There was even a good article, a front-page headline article in the Coeur d'Alene Press, as you know. There's a lot of concern about noise. Also, I've heard through the grapevine that one of the products coming out of that was possibly a noise, or a working group that, as part of their charge, would be to look at the noise issue. So I'm hoping to hear more about such a working group that maybe is forming in the city. I think that's an overdue thing. And thank you very much for taking a step like that to start addressing the noise issue. It's not, I live just across the street here from City Hall, and this is one of the very noise-affected neighborhoods of the city. There's others. And you've heard about Northwest Boulevard and some other areas, Sherman Avenue, I'm sure. But right here in this neighborhood, we do have a problem. We hate to complain about noise without also offering some suggestions about solutions. I'm a retired engineer and I have some background in acoustical and noise-measurement-type technology. So I certainly want to share that with you. But first of all, you do have a new ordinance here, newer ordinance, over a year old now, in Coeur d'Alene, that addresses noise. It's a very good ordinance. I've gotta compliment the staff for developing it, city staff, and the council for enacting it and approving it. You have a very good ordinance available to you, good in the sense that it doesn't require a law enforcement person to be standing with a sound level meter and measuring decibels and catching somebody going by. It's written from the standpoint of reasonable judgment by a law enforcement person, equipment modifications that are probably readily visible to a law enforcement person. So it's an enforceable, I believe, ordinance that you've put together. Now, the second phase of that is a campaign, I'll call it, to enforce the ordinance, to educate people about the ordinance, and that's the second part of it. So some of my suggestions are, as I complained about noise, suggestions would be more police presence, not just drive-by police roaming around. That's nice. But I think if a police car had been parked here Sunday night between 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock, after dark, between 10:00 and 11:00, they probably could have made five or six citations, just cars going up and down 8th Street, heading into the parking lot right out here outside of City Hall, where young people tend to congregate. So parking a police car, having a presence, not just roaming. Also, the possibility of ghost cars, empty police car, an old car parked somewhere for a while, moved around, as a sort of intimidating thing to people that wanna make a lot of noise. Fix-it tickets. They're done in other areas where cars that are stopped without a muffler, let's say, or a muffler in really bad repair, are given a warning and a fix-it ticket. They have so many days to repair that loud car, or they get a full citation. So fix-it tickets are, I don't think the city is using those. Electronic message signs. I see that the two signs at the entries to the city out on Sherman and out on Northwest Boulevard have been put back in place. Great move. I'm all in favor of that. That warns outside people coming in that there is room for ticketing. So also, electronic message signs activated by loud vehicles are very effective. Not that expensive. They're not gonna issue a ticket. They're not gonna take a picture. They're just gonna warn people that there is a noise violation. So, and outreach and education is always important. The more we can do of that with articles in the paper, or even communication with muffler shops, people that are in the business of modifying and making loud mufflers. I did talk to somebody at Subaru dealership that said they won't do them anymore. So that's a good model for what can be done. So anyway, thank you for all your work with noise, and I know there's more that can be done. So just some suggestions for the council and the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate it. All right, moving along. Council announcements. Anybody? Christie?
Couple. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify. I appreciated, Roger, I appreciated everything you said. Is he still here? Yeah, thank you. The lights are really bright. But I, we spoke about this at the last council meeting without it being on the agenda. We talked quite a bit. And then Councilman Miller was wise to tell us, hey, people, this is not on the agenda. So I thought we left it with it was gonna come back and be on an agenda. I don't know about a working group. I think that was one of the suggestions, but it hasn't been put on the agenda yet. So I just wanted to clarify. To my knowledge, we haven't done that yet, right?
Correct.
So it'll come forward on a future agenda. Thank you for your suggestions.
Mr. English?
I wanted to actually make some comments on something we dealt with, I don't know, it seems like six, eight weeks ago or something. And I happened to be driving by today at Second and Harrison, and we had an issue come by where somebody wanted to, there was a house there and a neighbor was concerned about, you know, if it was gonna be used for commercial, whatever, but also about the state of affairs of, you know, wasn't kept up and stuff. And today, it happened to catch my eye, and I actually turned around and kinda went down there. And I can see at least a couple of violations that give me concern. One that, it's either the weeds or trees or something that has grown up so high that that's, I mean, a fire hazard. The other thing is it would be the obstruction that, you know, when you're at a corner intersection where I was, I wouldn't have been able to look down the other way. So I don't know where that whole thing went, but there was a neighbor up the street, it seems like, that was concerned. So that's one, you know, with our, you know, code enforcement that I'd put on their list to go check that out, and just so folks know that, yeah. We do get back to some of these things and take it serious, so. That was enough. Okay.
Anything else, folks? Mr. Gookin?
Oh, I saw the same thing that Dan saw. I think those are larch trees that are trying to grow in the front yard.
But still, they're broken.
Yeah, it's, it's, it needs to be taken care of, yeah.
All right, hearing no more announcements. I just have an appointment. I would like to appoint Corey Keller to the Design Review Commission, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Corey Keller to the Design Review Commission.
Second.
Being moved in second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution Number 25-046.
Second.
Moving, Dan. Second at Consent Calendar Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
All right, next on the up is Council Bill Number 251016, Amending Municipal Code Entitled Cruelty to Animals, To Prohibit or of Confining Animals in Any Unattended Vehicles. Chief White, welcome, and thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I come to you tonight as a lead dog catcher for the city. What I'm requesting is an amendment to Municipal Code 6.15.110 by adding a new subsection F that reads as follows. In addition to the other prohibited conduct, it's quote, "Leaving or confining an animal in any unattended motor vehicle under conditions that endanger the health or well-being of the animal due to heat, cold, lack of adequate ventilation, or lack of food or water, or other circumstance that could reasonably be expected to cause suffering, disability, or death to the animal." As the staff report reads, last year during a six-month period, we received approximately 110 calls for service for animals left unattended in vehicles. And during approximately a six-month time period this year, we've received 58 calls. It's probably a little timely that we're doing this on a day when the temperature outside is, you know, over 100 degrees. The problem we have with the current Idaho code is it lacks clarity. And then a different section, it requires a veterinarian's determination that the animal was improperly cared for. This just goes back to the reasonableness standard. So if a reasonable animal control officer or citizen would think that the animal was left inappropriately long in a vehicle with the, you know, inappropriate ventilation or something like that, we could take some sort of action. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
No questions for the chief. Mr. Gookin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, someone mentioned online that there might be some ambiguity in this code, and I wanna know how you would address it. So it talks about adequate ventilation, lack of food or water, other circumstances that could be reasonably, there's my favorite legal word, reasonable, be exposed to cause suffering, disability. I mean, how is an officer going to determine adequate ventilation, lack of food or water, or other circumstances?
Well, as you said, the reasonableness standard is one that's commonly used in our line of work. If, if, let me put it to you this way. We're not looking to be citation-heavy. It's not like we're gonna go out and cite everyone who happens to leave a animal in a car. As the staff report reads, the majority of these instances are already fixed or solved through education. There's occasionally a citation that's written, but generally, the person just doesn't realize how hot, how fast a car can get that hot and cause the animal to be in danger. I would tell you that on a day like today, if the windows are rolled up and the dog's left in the vehicle even for 15 minutes, I would think that would be unreasonable, and I think our animal control officers would come to the same conclusion. I've also asked that the sergeant in charge of that unit provide some additional training to our animal control officers so they better understand the reasonableness standard, so we're not inappropriately issuing citations. But I think by and large, our best success comes through education and try to get the word out to the public that you can't leave your animals unattended in a vehicle when the weather's warm.
So in your experience and knowing our department the way it is set up, what is your opinion on the spirit of this law versus the letter of this law? Is that going to be an issue?
I don't think so. Our folks are, they're very good at what they do. Like I said, we're not out to just write a whole bunch of citations. I think during those circumstances, though, when there might be some disagreement as to whether or not the animal was inappropriately left for a duration of time that most people would think was too long, when the weather is too warm, the officers then could take action and have it be, or easily prosecuted in court.
And this is a citation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Christie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thanks for bringing this forward. I think it's long overdue. It's hard to imagine that someone would leave their animal in the car, but they do. Along with this, though, and it, I don't think we can weave it into this ordinance, but I'd like you to give it some thought and our city attorney to give it some thought. Some of the same complaints that come forward about animals being neglected are when they come down to our major events downtown, and it's really hot and they're dragging their pets through downtown. I don't know if there's a possibility of just not allowing pets during special events. I don't know if you get a lot of calls on that, but I hear from the public on it, and they are concerned. And when we see these dogs that are obviously very hot, it is concerning. So I don't know if you have any feedback on that.
I can't speak to the number of calls we receive regarding just that one specific issue. I would tell you that occasionally, we get calls about a dog that might have got aggressive with another pedestrian downtown or something of that nature. But as to the number of calls where someone thought that the, you know, the dog hadn't had water in some period of time or something like that, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to speak to that tonight.
Okay, thank you. Just for future conversation, though, I'd maybe like to come back with this and see if there are other cities with ordinances that would address special events, and maybe it's something we'd wanna consider.
Thank you. Mr. English?
Well, just, I noticed the other interesting bookend on this, I mean, we're talking about heat, and that's the most obvious, but also cold. And, you know, on one hand, we think, you know, gee, dogs aren't gonna get too cold, but I mean, certain dogs, certain conditions. Is that kinda standard to have the hot or cold conditions in there?
Well, not in Arizona, where I'm from, but I think here, it's probably a good provision to have in there. On a February day when it's, you know, 10 degrees outside all day long, to have a dog that's left in there for hours on end is probably unreasonable.
Yeah, yeah, it's good to have it in there. It's better to have the revenge.
And even if you put water in, it's gonna freeze right up.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions for the chief? Look for a motion.
Well, I would start by making a motion to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill Number 251016 once by title only.
Second?
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
All right, can you read the title, please?
Council Bill Number 251016, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Kootenay County, Idaho, Amending Coeur d'Alene Municipal Code Section 6, 15110, Entitled Cruelty to Animals, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, Providing a Several Beauty Clause Providing for the Publication of a Summary of This Ordinance and an Effective Date thereof.
Motion?
Oh, so let's make a motion to adopt Council Bill Number 251016.
Second.
Moving, Dan. Second at Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Thanks, chief. Moving on, we have a presentation from the Coeur d'Alene Police Association Negotiation Proposal. And the president is Officer Daniel Haley, Association President. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you very much, mayor and city council. I appreciate the chance to get on the agenda and speak to you tonight. So there's two reasons for us to be on the agenda tonight. The first is to cure a potential issue that was brought up by the city attorney regarding an email that I sent with some information to all of you. There was a concern that there would be a potential open meetings violation by me providing that and then speaking with any of you members about that. So in order to cure that, one of the remedies we spoke about was me speaking in front of council. So I appreciate you getting me on the agenda so we can take care of that, and then also talk about the issue at hand. So specifically, the issue at hand regarding what we have going on and where we are kind of stuck with our negotiations is the difference in proposals on supervisory pay for the Coeur d'Alene Police Department sergeants and lieutenants specifically. The reason this is an issue is, and it listed out here, gives you a couple of different examples of people. So you take a 15-year employee that's been a field-training officer, but that's all they've chosen to do. They've chosen not to do a second specialty, just maybe that's a personal choice due to time commitments or whatever. But they've given 15 years. They train our brand-new officers. They are not in a senior status. That's a choice they've made. And then you could take a two-year employee that was a six-year or a four-year law enforcement officer in another agency transferring over, much like myself. And they could then both promote at the same time. And that two-year employee being a senior officer, say they're a phlebotomist and a DRE, and they obtained senior officer pay. The POA's proposal is that those would both be promoted at the same pay rate, which seems like a reasonable thing to do. We put a specific number on this. And the reason we... And the reason we chose to increase it is because there are officers that when they promote, they take a pay cut hourly to take on more responsibility and to be in charge of a team. And that is a hindrance to many of our officers that want to promote. You see a lot of officers, as good cops do, sitting in the back here tonight. Many of them are not sergeants. And so the opportunity has been there to promote, but officers have not chosen so because it's not incentivized. And so that's what we're trying to do with this proposal, is to incentivize the promotion. We could have, one of the examples that specifically I want to get into is a school resource officer. They are a senior officer. They are being paid with their school stipend as well, as well as their investigation stipend. And they are, would be taking a pay cut of $2.16 per hour currently, per hour. That's not going to get them a strong desire to promote. Now, many of these people do want to lead a team and be in charge of those, but when they have to look at the financial situation that their family has to face and choosing whether or not to promote and to further their career, that shouldn't be the decision factor for them. They should be adequately compensated at the sergeant level in order for them to promote without a pay cut. Now, when you look at the difference in proposals, the POA's proposal specifically, we are asking for an increase of 3.16% of the sergeant pay. Now, it's a great round number that I know is loved by all. But the reason we came to that is we factored in holiday pay. We looked at what is their total compensation package that they will end up with at the end of the year? And yes, this is still an hourly cut for that school resource officer, but 64 cents as opposed to $2.16. And so we're trying to be fiscally responsible with our request. We don't want to just all of a sudden say every sergeant should then be paid above what a school resource officer is. We are asking for this incremental increase to the entire range. And I'll explain a little bit more about the entire range in just a second. So that is why, that is why we are here for this is to encourage these officers to promote. And let me just briefly talk about what these sergeants and lieutenants do, just to make it very clear. They are not just paper pushers. They are not report checkers only. They are leading teams that are your community action team, going after drug dealers, going after the violent criminals. They are leading SWAT teams. They are the ones in the bearcat making the decisions. In June, they were the ones making the decisions. A lieutenant was leading the SWAT response in June. So that's what these officers that were requesting this pay increase for are doing on a day-to-day basis, okay? So as we look at it, I want to compare just what were our proposal to what the city's proposal is. And this is why we're at a sticking point. And I know you have been likely presented this based upon the information in negotiations. On paper, I will say the city's proposal looks great. I'll say that, on paper. But in practicality, it does not work. So the city's proposal is that a senior officer would then be brought in 10% above what they are currently at, which would put them mid-range of a sergeant right now. But if you are not a senior officer, you'll be brought in at the lower rate, at the minimum. This will create discrepancy on people that are promoted on the exact same day, doing the exact same job. You could have a sergeant that's been a sergeant for 11 months, has not reached their one-year mark where they would get that 5% increase, and they could be having to train a new sergeant that is now making $2.00 an hour more than them, having never done the job. And that's untenable for us. And that is where the POA has said, we cannot accept this, and where we struggle with this proposal. On paper, it looks great, 10% for all senior officers. But in practicality, what you're creating is division among sergeants. And that's not something that we're agreeable to. So that does make the city's proposal an indeterminate cost, whereas ours has had a cost of approximately $90,000. Because if you move the sergeant range, you have to correspondingly move the lieutenant range. And we did that math again and took all those factors into account, and we're asking for a 2.57% increase for the lieutenants. So all of it told, and when you, I did the factor for include the benefits, so times it by approximately 1.3, that's where we get the 89.859 for that total cost. There is a cost to our proposal. There's a cost of doing the work that these gentlemen and ladies do back there, too. So in the end, what we are seeking to do is to have our next sergeant promotional exam have more than three people test for it. We had three out of a department of 100. It's not because they're not capable. It's not because they don't have the wherewithal to do it and are scared of the test. It's because it's not fiscally responsible for them and their family in order to promote and take on that greater responsibility, which they are trying to do for the other officers in this department and for the city and the citizens that they serve. So that is why we are here tonight. That is why I specifically requested to be on this, you know, the second part of the twofold, one, to cure the concern of the city attorney, and then two, to present this to you, because I know it can be complicated to understand, and it takes a couple of times explaining it to people before it's fully understood and grasped. So at this point, I just stand for questions on it.
Questions, council? Mr. Gookin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Officer Haley, when you presented this plan to the city negotiators, what was the response?
It has not been one that they have accepted. We have presented this from the second meeting, because the first meeting was just for a quick one-year contract for that. And so we have presented it for multiple meetings and has not been received for that. At this point, at the end of this meeting, it was declared as an impasse. So that's currently where we sit in our negotiations.
Who declared it as an impasse?
The city administrator, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, do you remember when the council authorized the administrator to declare an impasse in this negotiations?
He did it after the meeting with them.
Okay.
Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm one of the people trying to understand it. So this, the, the city's proposal, we're familiar with, and I was hopeful that that did cure the compression in the department. It does sound good because compression's been an issue for quite some time. So right now, you're saying, as it stands, that the compression is still there. What will happen with your proposal moving forward with compression when people change or get promoted? What will happen?
Certainly. So what it will do is create the space now, and then they will all continue to be getting the same pay raises at that point. Part of the issue that we are here was there was an interpretation, and this is before I joined the E-Board, so I've been spoken to by past presidents about this, that there was an interpretation of the contract at that time that lowered the amount that the sergeants were making based upon the combination of it was their yearly increase at the same time as the COLA, and it wasn't calculated in a certain way, and that actually compressed the pay. So that's why we're, that's, from my understanding, what made this occur. What the goal is now is to create the gap and then continue to maintain that. So when I put these numbers together that are in front of you, that is pre any wage increase or COLA or whatever you want to call it. Those are the numbers that it would need to be currently prior to any increase at that point. So it would create that separation and then continue to maintain it as the percentages go.
So that would be adopted into the salary schedule?
What we're requesting is that an update of the supervisory range to literally move the supervisory range up by that 3.16%, the entire range. And so that was another idea that was thrown out by the city was to, can we just bring everyone in at that mid-range? Then your range of sergeant is $3.00 for the entire pay range, which is significantly lower than any other pay range within the entire city. So the ability to move within that pay range is also important to sergeants. As they gain that experience, you want to reward that with that pay as well. If that kind of answers your questions, we're just trying to create a separation right now that will be maintained by future increases.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. English?
Well, just some comments. You know, everybody in the council, we are, you know, strong on supporting public safety. Also, I mean, the negotiation process is always, can be kind of a tricky process because you still can't do everything for everybody. But in terms of the, kind of the top of pyramid, you know, public safety is. And we've met in our times and also, you know, have given our, you know, we've come to some different consensus and kind of given our negotiating teams, you know, some kind of marching orders. And sometimes probably wasn't easy for them. And so, you know, kind of trying to balance between, you know, kind of where we're at and, you know, supporting, kind of supporting all angles and, of course, the taxpayers and stuff. But in your presentation, having done this in a lot of different positions and all of that, I mean, to me, the most, the biggest thing that jumped out at me of what you said, if that was accurate, if I heard it right, is in the last, like, testing opportunity, you only had three people willing to even be tested? Is that?
That is correct, sir. And I appreciate the way that Coeur d'Alene Police does it. The previous department that I worked for, I'm in another state, and that shall remain nameless, that they, everybody that tested got on the list. Coeur d'Alene does not do it that way. If you don't pass, you don't pass. And you don't make the list. So we had three tests and two that moved on at the end of testing. So we hold our sergeants to a high standard. The same is done with the lieutenant test. But yes, for three people to be willing to put in, that's a significant issue to us. And that has been the, I think, the last three testing processes have been very similar numbers.
Okay, so anyway, yeah, some soak tight. Wanted to just make sure I'm getting that right. Thanks.
That is correct.
Kenny?
So you're gonna, you're trying to fix the compression?
Yes.
And the difference between an officer and the sergeant, the leadership role, from what I'm used to, it's, everything's 10%, right? So does that cause a problem for the officers who are not in supervisor role? Is that going to cause an issue for them down the road? Because that, the bottom range for sergeant lieutenant is going to be higher.
So it's, I think I see where you're going from there. The current range is basically 10% from the maximum regular officer to the minimum sergeant. That is 10%. The issue we run into is when we run into the senior officer side of it. So increasing that gap, it's either 10% or to the minimum. So it's the, so getting them up to that minimum is going to be the key, which has been the standard practice, is moving all the sergeants to the minimum. So if that standard practice continues to hold, it shouldn't create an issue. Even during our negotiations, it was mentioned that some of the officers that have not achieved that, usually they don't promote sergeant within those first five years, but occasionally those things can happen, they would be receiving more than a 10% raise up to that minimum. So by raising the minimum, there will be some officers that receive a larger than a 10% increase based upon that. But what the issue that we're finding is it's our more senior officers that cannot fiscally promote, is what it comes down to. So we're trying to fix that issue on the senior end, whereas it's not necessarily been an issue for the lower end.
Great job, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a couple of questions for you. So if this went through on the sergeant level, what's the total impact on the budget? Because that's been mostly our focus is the big pile of money?
Certainly, and I can, I understand that. So the sergeant specifically is $67,319 just to move, and that's prior to, and I'll make that clarification, prior to whatever cost of living would come out of it. The lieutenant side of it is $22,540. So the total cost is 89.859. I know it's a specific number. I think I've been pretty close on all of our numbers with what the city's come up with. So I feel confident it's right in that range.
So that's a new dollar that we need to do to suffice this?
Yes, sir. It is a new dollar request, yes.
Besides what we're already offering for everybody?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Kristi?
Follow-up question?
Follow-up question. Well, I'm not sure where this goes from here. Councilman Gookin has said that there's an impasse, and I guess maybe our administration would tell us, is there an impasse? Are we able to keep negotiating?
I think we're going to still go forward. I think tonight when we do, it'll come up in executive session, so we can kind of get clear on where we've been to finish this year's budget going in and then work on this one, see where you guys are at. Because the last time they negotiated, if I recall, we had set some limitations, and that's what kind of made the impasse, because we didn't want to get there. So, I think it's still workable, and there's still time for it.
I appreciate that. What I'm getting is, I hope that there's not a declared impasse, and we're done. It sounds like we can still keep working on this.
I agree.
We are certainly still open to being at the table.
Any other questions? We appreciate you taking the time.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to open our public hearing. This is an exciting one. This is approving the annual appropriations for fiscal year 2025 and '26, and the use of 1% forgone taxes for maintenance and operations. And our Finance Director, Katie Ebner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We are here. We've spent so much time together this summer talking about the budget in our workshops. And this is the point where you all have the legislative task of appropriating the funds through the ordinance. Tonight, my presentation should contain no surprises going from our budget workshops. We've done a lot of work. I've, I've received a number of great questions from council members, and hopefully I do not have any questions out there, any big questions out there hanging. But yeah, mostly these budget hearings, it's going to be pretty redundant from what we've talked about, and this is for the public. This is, you know, we see a lot of feedback out there. We do not like tax increases. Nobody here really supports that as a concept. However, we do need to inform the public of how property taxes work in Idaho, and the justification for why this is presented in our budget tonight. Just a quick overview of what I will go through. We will talk about general fund revenue sources, property taxes. We'll talk a little bit about growth in property taxes, lots of misconceptions out there, and then property tax impacts that are projected with this budget that is presented tonight. We will do a high-level overview of expenditures, and then we'll talk about recommended rationale, the recommendations that we've discussed in those workshops, and a little bit of rationale, a quick overview for, for the public. Here is a breakdown of our operational revenue. So, we're focusing on the general fund. That is where the decisions are made. And as you can see, property taxes is a very large part of that pie. We have licenses and permits. Mainly, a lot of those are coming from building, inspections, permits, planning. And then we have intergovernmental receipts. The big ones in that category would be our sales tax revenue from the state, our liquor revenue from the state, and our highway user tax revenue from the state. And then we have a few, the, the largest part of this, you know, smaller slice of the pie is going to be our inter-fund transfers. That is what we charge to our utilities as overhead for the services that the city provides for those utilities. Here is an overview of revenue changes going from prior year adopted budget to the projected budget. And you see that we do have a increase in property tax revenue, and we'll talk some more about that number. We are projecting an increase in our licenses and permits. We have a lot going on in our permitting department, and we are seeing the revenues come in there. Intergovernmental receipts have reduced, have gone down, and that is mainly due to spending down the final ARPA funds from that COVID relief package. And then the last one there, we have inter-fund transfers. That is reflecting, we would, we do not have a budgeted line item from impact fees, and impact fees can only be transferred to our general fund for specific purposes, and there aren't any identified purposes at this time. However, if the year goes on, we can always amend to make that transfer. So, Coeur d'Alene is growing. That is not news to anyone. Our tax revenues from new construction have decreased over 70% since 2016. So, 2016 was probably the, the start of the really impactful growth, and we used to, the, the formula worked in such a way that when we saw that growth, we would receive revenue automatically through the formula in order to serve that growth. And currently, well, actually, the entire, the formula is based on a preliminary levy rate. And so, what happens is, when our assessed values increase, that preliminary levy rate drops. And we saw such a significant drop in that preliminary levy rate, that when we apply that against our new construction, we were seeing just a fraction of the revenues that we would have seen before. So, this addresses a huge misconception that, one I see a lot, is that with assessed values increasing, we're receiving more money. That is not the case. We do not receive more money when assessed values increase for existing property. It actually affects the formula negulative, negatively, excuse me. And in the way that, when we have this growth, which is another misconception, that these, you know, we have some large buildings coming in, we have new, new neighborhoods being built, we should be seeing new revenue from that, and that is a misconception. We are still receiving some revenue, but it is a fraction of what is needed in order to address the population growth. And we, we can't control our population growth legally. There, you know, it's, it's something that, we're, the city and almost every city in Idaho has found themselves in this situation because of the way the property tax formula works, and because of the way that assessed values have gone up, especially post-COVID. And the legislature implemented another restriction on this revenue that can come from new growth, and we are only allowed to include 90% of that new growth in our property tax formula. So, growth paying for growth, we, we really would like to see that be, to be the case. We had $93 million in valuation come on the property tax rolls reported by the county this summer. And based on the new construction, and the property tax formula would add $202,000 in revenue. So, that's a lot of money to the average person, right? But our, our budget is, is, that, that's a very small fraction of our budget. And when you think of how the city must serve this growth, streets, public safety, and then the cost to retain our staff in this economy, it, it is not going to cut it when we're adding nearly a million dollars in new construction, which brings residents and people to serve. So, our revenue loss from these limits, in the past, we could cover those rising costs to serve our new residents using revenue for new growth. But that's just not available anymore with, with the formula. So, the city has one other mechanism in order to increase revenues to address this growth, and that is through a budget, budgeted increase to our property tax levy. And previously, it wasn't necessary, because the way the formula worked, the growth paid for itself. Now, that, this is really the only option for a city to address growth. So, the solution is what I am recommending in this budget, and have been recommending in our workshop, is to take the allowable 3% increase in our levy revenue, and then also recapture 1% of previously forgone taxes. So, these are taxes that the city was able to raise the budget in the past, but the city did not increase taxes in those years. So, this would be recapturing some of those taxes that were not captured in a prior year through the allowable increases.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Kiki.
Can you refresh my memory? It seems that the impact on the city budget number was somewhere where we're on 93 million, we're getting 200, 200,000. But previous, prior to these limitations, it was somewhere in the 800 to a million dollar range?
Yeah. So, I put together a number of slides last year. I probably could have included another one, which showed prior years, how much the increase was in new construction and what the city received. And that gap, I think that year where the city received $800,000, the new construction was a bit higher. But if you total up the years since this has happened, the, these losses have compounded. The city truly, it's very easy to get behind on revenues when that money is not coming in year after year after year. So, I think if we were to take the current new construction, it probably would be, I would say half a million is off the top of my head. It would be in the ballpark there. So, not to mention, last year, we probably missed out on another half a million. So, that would, those, those are permanent parts of our budget. So, we would have been able to keep up much better.
I think that draws the gap between what we're getting with these limitations versus what, if we had have been able to continue on that projected recapture, we wouldn't be going in a hole.
Yes. All right. So, another misconception is that we're going to increase property, if we were to increase property taxes by 4%, our property tax revenue, I would imagine our residents are going to look at their previous property tax budget and increase it by 4% and think that is what a council's vote tonight would happen. And so, here is another way to show it. When the city approves a, a tax increase, a percentage tax increase, it does not translate to a percentage increase on the tax bill. The property taxes are based on the individual taxpayer's valuation and growth in the market. The new construction would, adding that as part of the market, the new construction typically will make an increase like this relatively flat. And so, when I say an individual taxpayer's valuation, I want to remind that because a taxpayer's valuation went up, doesn't mean we capture an additional amount of revenue. We levy an amount. And so, the amount and the market, the, the divisor here is the market. So, when the market increases, the residents bear less of a burden because it's spread out with that new growth. So, to take what our preliminary tax rate is, if you were to look at a $450,000 home, that's taxable value, so that is, with the homeowner's exemption subtracted out, they would see under a dollar increase on their monthly escrow payment. And that is, this is for the city's budget, general fund budget. We did have a bond-approved overwhelming support, but that is a separate item. But this is the operational, if we were to increase our property tax budget by 4%. So, that's not 4% of an increase from, from their city budget there. And as you go up, if you look at a larger million-dollar home, they would see $2.13 a month more. So, this is not so simple to just look at your prior tax bill and, you know, multiply by .04. All right. I will jump into a high overview of our expenditures, and this is broken down by department. And I am going to address those major differences, what has caused these differences. But if you look at it, bottom line, our expenditures are going down by 2.1 million. That is planned as part of a one-time project finishing. So, we are not cutting, for example, police department by 4.3 million. That is the reduction in the budget to reflect a construction project that was in prior year is no longer in the budget. So, just to further show the effect here, wages and benefits are up from prior year, services and supplies are mostly flat, and then you see that dramatic drop in capital outlay. So, the, the explanation behind that large overview of changes between prior year and FY '26 is that wages and benefits are budgeted to increase $2.1 million. And so, we have a few things happening there. First of all, when we build a flat budget with staffing, we have staff that are scheduled to move up with merit increases, so those are accounted for in the budget process. But we also do have some wage increases factored into this budget. So, 0% for mayor and city council, as was voted at the last workshop, and a 3.5% wage increase for fire department, and that is from a prior-year contract. We have, it sounds like a tentative agreement with Lake City Employees Association for a 3.5% wage increase. And along with that, 3.5% wage increase for non-exempt, so our non-bargaining employees. And we have an offer of 3.5% wage increase to the Police Officers Association.
Question?
In it, oh.
Mr. Gookin? Question, the 3.5% wage increase for exempt non-bargaining employees is based on the 3.5% wage increase for LCEA. Is that in city code somewhere?
I don't know. It sounds like it's been a practice for probably many years. I, I don't know of a deviation from that.
So, it's not, not in code? There's no policy? It's just what they do?
Yeah, it's been going on for a while. Melissa, is that in the personnel rules? Sorry about that.
The increase for exempt employees is just approved by council. That's in the personnel rules. There is a resolution, I don't know how many years ago, quite a few years ago, we have a group of unrepresented employees that don't fall under, that aren't exempt, that don't fall under one of our bargaining groups, that, there is a resolution that says the same negotiated items under Lake City Employees Association would be given to that unrepresented group as well.
So, that's in personnel rules?
That was approved by a resolution quite a few years ago. The personnel rules, so there's a lot of different groups of employees. The personnel rules for the exempt staff, the increases says as approved by council.
Which means it just happens through the budgeting process? And so, the 3.5 is taken?
Yeah, there used to be a 3% amount in the personnel rules, and we removed that and just said as per approved by council.
So, when LCEA does the negotiations for their own group, are they aware that they're also negotiating for the other groups?
They are not negotiating for the other groups. The city is just responsible for that cost.
But in a way, they are, because if they want 3.5% for their own people, then the city just automatically gives the 3.5% to the exempt employees?
No, not to the exempt employees, the unrepresented employees. Those are two different groups.
But it, it carries over?
To the unrepresented, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And just one other item that we see throughout the budget is a 3% increase in health benefit premiums. This is, in my history of budgeting, a pretty good increase. I think, yeah, I've seen, I've seen a lot, a lot worse in my past budgeting. So, a few other changes are some full-time equivalency changes. So, we call these FTE. That would be adding staff. And one FTE change we will see is three new custodians in our building maintenance department, and this is to replace some contracted services. So, it was determined that it would be highly beneficial for the city to have our own employees. And so, that is in the budget. From the conversation at the last workshop, I have added two new firefighter FTE, and this is, the intent here is to lower the constant manning overages. So, we would see a little bit of savings because the constant manning, those, we are required to have a certain number of staff on each shift. And a lot of times, if we don't have the staff, if they're out due to injury, illness, we would have overtime, which is, is much more expensive compared to having straight-time employees. And so, adding these two new firefighter FTEs is going to hopefully alleviate a little bit of that constant manning. And always, the, the hope is, is that we have our staff well and back to work. So.
Let's see, a follow-up on that, just to clarify for the three custodial, which I highly support. I mean, that we have our own people, then we get to determine, you know, who knows what a future contract comes in. It's hard to get them, and, and they can be cross-trained. But, but basically, that's just a wash, is it? Whatever, the amount that it's going to cost for our own actual employees with benefits and all of that, is about a wash with the contract? Or how close, or?
So, the current-year contract is less than what it would cost to add those custodial FTEs. The problem was going into the next year, the contract was going to be significantly higher in order to have, you know, what, what we want out of having, you know, clean, safe facilities. And so, you will see in the budget that it is an increase to the building services department. However, it was a wash between the increase in the contracts. That, that's a really tough, tough thing to, to have filled right now as far as custodial work, contracted services. You can struggle a lot with consistency and that sort of thing. So.
Yep. Actually, our church has the same problem. So, yep, I know.
And the last new FTE we added was building inspection, and that would be a permit tech. And if you look back at the revenues that have increased in those services, or the permitting area, that more than pays for this ask. And we have Idaho code that we have to follow that give us deadlines on when, how long it takes until we respond to these permit applications. So, that is direly needed in that department.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor. So, Katie, that code is new, this last?
It was.
This year?
Yeah. Yes.
So, they came, the legislature said you have to review these permits in a certain period of time?
Right.
So, there isn't enough staffing to get that done by that deadline?
Right.
So, we wouldn't have any control over that?
Right.
Okay.
And then, again, capital outlay decreased 4.4 million. The majority of that was funded through ARPA funds. So, you see on the other side, the revenues went down in intergovernmental, and we also see our capital outlay decreasing. And we also see our capital outlay decreasing significantly. All right. Just to talk a little bit more about the ongoing deficit in our budget. So this budget includes a $1.8 million use of fund balance to supplement revenues and afford ongoing operations. So fund balance, we, we think of that as one-time money. It is the reserves of the, of the city. And we're, we're getting closer to the sort of unhealthy levels of fund balance if we follow this trajectory. So the $1.8 million in fund balance, there's always hope that we could have savings throughout the year that could alleviate that. But we, this budget is committing funds that could bring us up to a dip of $1.8 million in fund balance. So that is a huge priority for, for me to look at ways to get that down to zero. And, and in my opinion, the city is in a bank. We don't need to add, add to fund balance and build reserves unless there's a plan to use them. But the concern here is dipping into that fund balance year after year without an easy way to pull, you know, hit, hit the brakes on that. This was requested in one of the budget workshops. So this, these are some scenarios. And it's, it's so hard to look at future years. We don't know as far as what expenditure increases are. Sometimes we are just dealt with some expenditure increases that we have to absorb. But I tried to run things that would, just some pretty big assumptions that I don't expect to be able to project at this moment in any way. But this, the assumption here is that we would increase property taxes 4%, and we would have an annual increase of 2% in expenditures. So that trajectory is not sustainable. And then we have a projection of a 4% property tax increase with no increase in expenditures. Of course, this is a fairy tale right here. Our expenditures don't go up. But that is where we would kind of want to see, okay, we're leveling off, we're not dipping into fund balance after FY '27. And then to try and make something a little more realistic is a 1% annual increase in expenditures. That is where we can finally get to that leveling off. But notice, these include a 4% property and property tax increase. And that has to do with what I said about not being able to access revenue to address growth. Moving into the recommendation, and that is to approve the budget as presented with the 3% property tax revenue increase and 1% use of forgone taxes. And, you know, I get to have my soapbox moment of plan for future, future fiscal years with constraints on spending. So we're at this point where we can't really control our revenues beyond this. And so what can we control is our expenditures. And just, just a way to show, you hear a lot of, oh, you know, balance the budget, don't increase revenues, live within your means, that sort of rhetoric. But when we look at where, where the city was in 2010, we've had, of course, the population growth. But we have become more efficient serving the community. Most of our general government departments have not added staff since 2010. I looked through our FTE reports back to 2010, and it was very minimal. A number of departments lost FTEs. So, and, you know, we have, we, again, we have this restriction on revenues. This was kind of interesting. So if you look at population, I, I went back to 2019 because that was prior to COVID. You know, we, we had been growing quite a bit leading up to 2019. But if you looked at the total city FTE, so that's employees. So when you see a fraction of an employee, that means a part-time employee. And when you look at FTEs per 10,000 citizens in 2019 compared to now, we, it's, it's lower. And we've had this, you know, doing more with less is, has been the trend. And we don't have updated numbers for population growth. I would, I would guess that it's quite a bit higher, but I didn't want to make an assumption and have someone kind of disregard this. So even keeping that population, I didn't want to take anything that wasn't actual census information. We, we are doing more with less, so. Alrighty, that's all I have.
Kenny. So would you go back one slide, please? That is incredibly telling to me because the amount of work that our folks are doing is exponentially higher in just about every department. So, I mean, the city court lane was Doge, and Doge wasn't cool. Because we've been doing the official thing for a long time. And I know as a fact that when, even with firefighters that are contracted, we had to justify the need for any new positions. I think that's a big reason that we are where we are. When it comes to that number right there, and I'm just, every time I see that, it just really drives home that, you know, people might say something about a 3.5% COLA, but we're doing more with less. And keeping those employees are so vitally important because without them, I mean, I don't want to state the obvious, but the knowledge they have and the training we don't have to do for people that have been here for a long time is a wonderful investment in this community. So, you know, for me, the tax increase is incredibly tough, and I don't want to do it at all. But what aren't we going to do that people are used to for $15 a year?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Questions for Katie? So public, no? Thanks, Katie. We'll do the, open, and I have a list of people of the hearing. The people signed up to address.
Sorry.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Timison.
Casper.
I'm going to open the public hearing, and no one has signed up.
Mr. Mayor, I did receive an email from Susie Snedeker, who wanted me to read it in.
All right.
If your permission. If you haven't been to any of our budget hearings in the past, Susie was always here. She says for 25 years, she would stand at the lectern and tell us what's what. So she has sent an email. She also has a whole list of things that she went over with me in the budget. She is diligent about going through this budget line item by line item. And I fired off a bunch of emails today to clarify some stuff for her. Here is, here are the words of Susie Snedeker. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Because I'm unable to attend the meeting, Councilman Gookin has graciously offered to read my comments into the record. This is the annual preliminary financial plan hearing, the 25th year in which I reviewed every page, every item, line by line, of the 79-page document, making notes and preparing my comments, as I'm sure all of you did. As a citizen of the city, I expect not only transparency, but also your critical review of each and every transaction. I hope not to be disappointed. However, please remember fiduciary responsibility is born with each of you. And she would like to see a true accounting, this is just her request, she would normally make. She would like to see a true accounting of the fire expenditures and reimbursements. And she will do a public records request for that. And she forgot to comment on what was called the Employee Assistance Program, which was in the 23 budget for $9,720, and she can't find it. So I guess that would be a question of staff. Is there an employee assistance program, or was that retired?
Thanks, Susie.
Well, let's get the.
Somebody points to Melissa.
To Melissa.
We have one, yeah.
Who would be answering Susie's question if she was standing right there.
Yes, we are on the second year of a employee assistance program that was kind of a increased benefit other than just EAP. There's a telehealth side. So the city funds a portion of it. And then the city's medical trust funds a portion of it because it helps alleviate some of the more simple calls on our region's plan. So our ally health EAP pays for some of that, and the trust does as well.
Excellent. Well, on behalf of Ms. Snedeker, thank you. And wherever you are, Susie, I hope you feel better. Thank you.
And it's well worth the investment in that. Those are, yep. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and look for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. Probably not going to be very popular, but I'm going to make a motion. I would like to table Council Bill Number 25-1017 till the last meeting of the month or a special call meeting before the end of the month. It is, well, that's my motion.
Second, second to have the explanation.
And if you have discussion, I'll, yeah.
I second it, so you could tell us more.
Did you say discussion?
Discussion.
Thank you. What, I'm not, I'm not opposed. I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to make an issue about the request for the 3.5%. I fully understand the loss of revenue, the limitations that have been placed on us from the state, and council working so hard for years trying not to do a tax increase. And so we find ourselves in a deficit. And so I fully understand that. But, but I do have reasons for wanting to table this till the end of the month or a special call. And the first one is, we have two bargaining units that we do not have a signed contract with. We haven't settled with them. And I, I don't like the message of adopting the budget. We still have almost a month to try to resolve that. So I'd rather we resolved it before we adopted the budget. The other one is, I did send a proposal. Thank you, Katie, so much for your work on that, to get back to me on employee retirement incentives. I went through it a lot. My math is different from yours because I looked at some of those positions with four months open rather than two months. And, I mean, the difference was a half a million dollars. Some of them would be department heads, and it takes a long time to do a search anyway. So that, that's one, that's another one. I don't feel that we've looked for every dime. But that's not your entire responsibility. It's all of ours. The other one is, the council has repeatedly asked for items to be placed on the agenda to discuss, so to figure out if they belong in the budget. I've asked for it. Councilman English has asked, I've lost track of how many times, to have a meeting with the URD and.
Oh, the hospital district. Now you reminded me again. Okay, yes.
So that we could actually have that discussion. And, and maybe it results in, in no money, or maybe it results in some money. But it doesn't get placed on the budget, or, excuse me, on the agenda. So we don't get the discussion. We, we will never know. So finally, to me, the budget's not complete. It's not fully baked. I support that we have to take an increase. I completely, totally do. But I want to be able to do it knowing that we looked at everything, every possibility. Because this is a big deal. We're probably going to be the only entity around that would ask for the forgone because we need to, we have to. But I want to make sure that we've done our homework. So I would like to, in the meantime, while we wait to the end of the month, I'd like another workshop that focuses on employee incentives for retirement. And at that workshop, the URD and, and the compensation salary study. Thank you to our HR director for sending that to me. I wanted it on the agenda so we could all talk about it and figure out if that was the best avenue for us. It's not that I question the HR director. I don't. I know she's doing the best she can. But we have, we can't talk about it because it's not on the agenda. It's deep in a budget. So I want to have, I want to have further discussion. And then at the end of the month, we move forward feeling like we've, we've really looked at everything.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to one item? So if the ordinance is not approved before our L2, our levying paperwork is due to the county, which then goes to the State Tax Commission, that deadline is next week, I believe. We cannot levy anything.
Yep.
So that, that's the issue, is we have to have an ordinance approved by council. And I understand that there may be other items, which I fully support as the finance director. We, we have to look at expenditures. This is what we can control. And I don't think, I don't think it's, we're done talking about the budget as, as far as next year's budget or, you know, subsequent years. So, but I do want to make that clear, that if we do not approve the ordinance, I, I believe that we even need a week before because we have to notice. Not sure if we could even delay it one more week, but we, we have to have that. We, I have to include an approved ordinance with our levying paperwork.
Ms. Evans?
Well, that was my, that was my question, Katie. So I just want to be clear. Do you know what that exact date is? I know you said next week. Is it?
It is the.
Putting you on the spot, you know?
Yeah, I, I, getting to this point has been the goal. And then tomorrow is when the paperwork is done. So I don't want to say off the top of my head that we would even have a week. I, I'm concerned that if this doesn't go through tonight, we, we would, you know, turn our $1.8 million deficit into a, almost $30 million deficit by not, not being able to levy, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing that. Thank you.
I just wanted to clear up that I, I agree with all of these items that we should talk about them. I think that the URD meeting conversation is pending. They had talked about putting all of that data together, but there, there wasn't enough turnaround time to do it in time. So they are planning that meeting to come to council to say, here's what it would look like. I know Katie did some numbers on, kind of preliminary numbers on what that would look like. But there was a lot of moving parts with what's happening at the hospital, with their new leadership and all of that. So there wasn't enough time to get that put together. So it's not that it's not coming to the agenda. It definitely is. And I think that there were other things that we talked about that can come to the agenda, just not in this short a period of time for this budget deadline date. So I, I'm feeling like I have some notes too, that I am tracking to say, I want to make sure this comes to the agenda. And we follow up so that we, we're prepared in advance for our next cycle.
Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kristi, I agree completely. That incentive program has worked well in the past. I don't see a reason that it wouldn't again. But Katie, we can amend, right? And do anyway, correct? So there's not an enormous reason to not go forward when we know we can still amend the budget. And I think that the budget process should be something we do all year long, anyway. I think we should look at that and continue it. Just because this week's done, that doesn't mean we shouldn't keep looking at those great ideas that you have.
Well.
Mr. English.
Go ahead.
Just that, yeah, I think we need to pass this tonight. As the former auditor and all of that in the, yeah, we got to do this. And then we can come back, we don't have to wait a month. I mean, we could come back next month. I mean, once we have some of that information and the employee incentive, you know, what better time for them to get ready to go out at Christmas time? You know, who knows, whatever. But I mean, we can take a look at that because we know a budget, I mean, it's a waypoint in time. But at this point, it's a very significant one, that we don't want to mess with that. So, you know, I would not be in favor of tabling, waiting, we could need to do this, and then be prepared to, you know, work on some amendments in the very near future. Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie, thank you. I was not, I thought we had to the end of the month, or I wouldn't have made the motion. I've been trying to add, and all of us have, trying to have this budget discussion every chance we get. I don't want to let go of, thank you, Kenny, I don't want to let go of the idea of employee retirement incentives. I'd like to see us, I'll withdraw my motion because obviously it doesn't make any sense. But I would like to see a workshop just entirely on that, like within the next month.
What about the second? Okay, so I'm still looking for a motion. Mr. Gookin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have a motion in a second.
Did she just withdraw?
Did you withdraw?
Well, I have to. They said.
That's what you said. Sorry.
That's what you said, sorry.
How about making a motion just to make sure this happens? And I don't know if that's something we can do, to make a motion to make it happen so that we're sure that it's not, I mean, Mr. English has been asking for quite some time for a meeting. Should we just set a date certain?
I'd, uh, yeah. I I don't know if I can do that. Randy, can I do that?
The finger's poised on the button.
On the button. And it's my legal opinion that it's not on the agenda, you can't make a motion.
Okay.
But the agenda, the motion, the issues for council meetings, special council meetings, those are, uh, addressed in statute. The mayor can call it, you guys can call it. You just follow the procedure. So it should happen if you, if a majority of council wants to have, wants it to happen.
I'll make a request to the mayor tomorrow. Thank you.
It's on my list.
So we we close the public hearing, right?
Yep, we're moving on. We're still looking for a motion for Council Bill 251017.
Well, I could just make a motion right now to dispense with a rule to read the Council Bill 251017, once by title only, and put off some pain for a few minutes.
You bet. Second. Been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Gookin.
Yes, on this one.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Yes.
All right, motion, motion carried. Could you read the title, please?
Council Bill Number 251017, An Ordinance Entitled Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2025, Appropriating the Sum of $151,945,475 to Defray the Expenses and Liabilities of the City of Coeur d'Alene for Said Year Levying a Sufficient Tax Upon the Taxable Property Within Said City for General Revenue Purposes For Which Such Appropriations is Made, Levying Special Taxes Upon the Taxable Property with Said City for Special Revenue Purposes Within the Limits of Said City of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, Providing for Sovereignty and Providing an Effective Date. Hereo.
Very good. So now I will make a motion to adopt Council Bill 251017.
Second.
Very good.
Moving in a second. Discussion.
And, Mr. Mayor, so I will, uh, I will explain why I'm voting against this motion.
We had a pool.
I can, I can do that. Yeah, everything Katie said about our predicament regarding the legislature is absolutely correct. In their efforts for property tax relief, they have created a nightmare for us, where we have millions of dollars in new growth and the benefit to our taxpayers is $200,000. That's pitiful. That's not property tax relief. That's, it's disgusting. The council did offer, uh, cuts. We had a workshop, and I offered some cuts. I know Christie offered some cuts. Other people suggested item, I mean, you saw it here tonight. We're we're constantly working. I think one of the, one of the great things we did was to take zero percent ourselves. So we are getting no pay increase, and I I think that's great. That's a, it's a good, uh, it's a good message to give to the public. I do want to see that we have, uh, and I don't know if it's in the budget, but is there a line item for the apparatus for the fire department? I asked just for a line item unfunded. Just want to make sure that's, that was put in there. Also, we had discussed, there's a couple of things that we discussed that that, uh, just didn't come to fruition. As Christie mentioned, there's a lot of stuff we can still discuss, which is why I think a, um, a workshop would be great. We have the fees on our utility bills, which we had discussed a year ago, having the utilities absorb those fees, so we didn't have to pay the extra dollar for our utility bills. Um, there was an issue brought up by former Mayor Widmire to lease the, um, the facilities, the land that the water district uses, or water, you know, utility uses, back to the city, get some revenue that way. That'd be nice. But with, uh, with a lot of people out there who are on social security, on a fixed income, about 40% or more of the city is on fixed income. I can't support a huge increase. I realize with the legislature, the way that they are, increases are necessary in the future, but I think we could do more to cut, and that's where I'm coming from. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Katie for all of her work. I'm preparing for our workshops, preparing our various emails that you receive and the response to them, and helping us work through this. Um, your presentation was very comprehensive and hopefully educational for all, the entire community on, um, the situation that we're faced with tonight in, um, presenting this budget. So thank you for all the work you've done.
Christie.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I s- I still don't like the idea of adopting a budget when we haven't finished up negotiating with with two entities, but I am not one to do a protest vote on one item. So I will, I will support the budget. I do appreciate that council has agreed to do a workshop, and we can continually focus on some of these issues that we want to keep talking about. The whole council does. I I agree, Kenny. Once a year, a season of a couple of months is not enough. We just have to keep after it.
Mr. English.
Um, just, I mean, I don't mind being on the record that, I mean, I support this, the some years, you know, we need to do the 3%, we probably should have done it some other years, but but this year, I mean, we need to with the obligations we have. And I also have no problem with the 1% forgone. I remember back when I was at the county, and at that point, Commissioner Compton, who then later Senator Compton, but in talking about the forgone, I mean, that's something that, you know, at the time, way back when, we could have been taking the different forgones because we had authority to do that, but he said, but we left it in the taxpayer's pocket. They got to use it, they got to invest it and all of that, but we still, in a sense, kind of had a lien, and now we've got to do that. And it's like, now we've got to use what's there, and, um, and we're probably going to be in that boat for maybe a couple of years because we've got to do these different things. But, um, you know, I'm not saying I'm wild about supporting it, but I don't have, I don't apologize whatsoever for supporting the 3% and the 1% this year.
Kiki. Sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to bring this up. I, nobody wants to raise taxes, nobody wants to do that. It's just something that when you look at this and you look at the reality of the D, of the data there, there there aren't options. One thing that's frustrating me a little bit, and I don't know how to resolve this, but Christie, you may have some ideas, is I'm fully supportive of doing another workshop and or looking at this every month, but it seems to me we had a collective set of input that, um, you, Katie kind of collated and said, here's all of our ideas, things that we wanted to talk about. We talked about those at the workshop. We came through with some got incorporated, others did not. And then there's new ideas that come up, and then there's another one. And I feel like, um, I I would really like to find a way to consolidate what these are so we're not going, did we drop this one? Did this one get incorporated? Did council agree that that's one we wanted to incorporate, or is it one council member who wanted this one and one council member who wanted that one? So I'd really like to see if we can review some of that and say, well, some of these we already addressed, but they just didn't fly. These were added after the workshop, so we can be a little more efficient in continually reviewing this. And I know I have some that were still in 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 my idea, and the the URD conversation, I know, is one that that board has talked about, and it is pending, it is going to come up, it is going to be addressed. So it didn't fall off the table. It didn't not come to an agenda. It's just that there's not a running list of where all of these new ideas are so that we can, you know, efficiently look at it and add to it and, you know, check them off when we get, when we have the opportunity to get the right data in front of us. So I'm I'm just feeling that, um, that would be great to be able to move forward into the next year like that.
We good? So we need a roll call, please.
Gookin.
No.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Moving on, Resolution 25047, certifying the amount of forgone increase to be budgeted for fiscal year 25, '26, specifically in the amount of $290,146 pursuant to Idaho Code 63802 for maintenance and operations. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Of, Kiki's already said it, we've all said it, Dan's said it. It's, it's not something that we're enjoying, but clearly we're dealing with a deficit and we're going to have to move forward. I just want to follow up on Kiki's ideas. I like that. Let's consolidate everything because ideas are coming at all times, and those of us that are studying the budget nonstop think we have the latest, greatest idea, but maybe it's not. And so if we can, um, streamline some of that, maybe like make Katie's life a little easier too, and I'm one of the guilty parties, but, uh, I think we're all trying very hard to just look for every dollar so that we don't have to impose a, an additional tax increase.
But I like that, have a central record of those things, and they either fell off or they got approved or something, so it's not just-
Or there was something stalled them for some reason that we didn't know, so.
Yep.
Mr. Gookin.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so when, uh, the city council makes a decision, of course, it's a decision that we all support, eventually even the rogue who votes no. But I did want to just make an observation that, um, the city as a whole, city council makes a decision. We, it seems like we don't really have a problem with forgone, taking forgone taxes, but we do have an issue with taking forgone rent. Just going to let that hang out there.
Forgone what?
Rent.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Gookin.
No.
All right. Look for a motion for executive session, please.
So move.
I'll read that.
Second.
Excuse me, we cannot so move in a motion to executive session. We must read it out into the record. So I will move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code, Section 74206-1J and 74206A-1SubA, to deliberate on a labor contract offer or to formulate a counteroffer.
Discussion.
No, you need a second.
Second.
I'll second.
Kenny's got it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gookin.
I have to change everything here. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Gookin.
I'm going to vote no on this one, too.
Yes. Thank you all. We are into executive session.